Hi everyone, so this is a recap of our crochet basics tutorial which we had on the Monday the 10th of May. So for those of you who joined me, hopefully this will just be a refresher for you and maybe iron out any kinks that you might have come across during the live demonstration. So I'm going to start off by showing you how to make your slipknot. So to make our slipknot, we're going to wrap the tail of our yarn. So when I speak of the tail of the yarn, this is what I mean, the end of the yarn. And when I speak about the working yarn, I talk about the yarn that's the other end that's attached to your ball. Okay, so we're going to wrap the tail of our yarn around our index finger, just to make a loop like that. Then we're going to take the loop off our finger and we're going to bring the tail behind our loop. We're going to bring the tail behind our loop and just pull it gently until we get a little slipknot, just like that. And once we've got our slipknot, we can pop it on our hook and we can pull either end just to make it a little bit more snug on our hook. So as I mentioned in the live demonstration as well, there's a few different ways that you can hold your hook. I'd like to hold it like a spoon almost. Some people like to hold it like a pen. So I definitely would recommend that you spend a little bit of time playing around with it and see sort of what feels most comfortable for you in your own hands. Then with the working yarn side, this is how I hold the yarn to begin with. So I feed it through my fingers like this. And the reason for this, as I was saying before, is so that I have control over the tension. So when I open my fingers, the yarn moves quickly and when I close them, it's more tense and I've got more control. So to start off to make our chains, I've got my hook ready, I've got my slipknot on and I've got my yarn fed through my other hand. So what I like to do is hold the slipknot knot just between my middle finger and thumb as I'm starting off. It just keeps everything sort of controlled and you can see where everything is and nothing is sort of loose and getting out of control. So in order to make our chain, what we need to do is we're going to wrap the yarn around the hook. We're going to just turn our hook downwards so that our yarn isn't going anywhere. It's trapped underneath our hook and we're going to pull it through our slipknot and that makes one chain. So we're going to just repeat this. Yarn over the hook, turn it down slightly and pull it through. That's two chains. We're going to wrap the yarn over, turn our hook down, pull it through. That's three chains. And as you can see, my index finger and thumb are moving upwards along the work just so that I can again just maintain all that control. So we're going to yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through. And I'm going to do 10 chains. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. So I'll do two more. Yarn over, pull through and yarn over, pull through. So that's 10 chains. So as I was mentioning in our tutorial as well, what we need to do when we're working in rows like this is we need to incorporate a turning chain. And all that means is an extra chain to get us up a level so that we can work back along our row. And the reason for that is so that we don't eat into the stitches that we need in our pattern or whatever we happen to be following. So like I said before, the turning chain is just simply another chain. So we're just yarn over, pull through. And then to begin to work back along this row for our next row, we don't crochet into our turning chain. We just ignore our turning chain completely and we crochet into the next chain on the row. Okay, so to do that, we push our hook through that chain. We're going to yarn over, just pull through the chain. Then we've got two loops on our hook. Then we're going to yarn over and pull it through both loops. So that's the first single crochet, double crochet stitch, pardon. So we've crocheted into this stitch. So we're going to move along the row into the next chain here. We're going to push our hook through, yarn over, pull through. We've got two loops on our hook. We want to yarn over again and pull through two. Okay, so we're going to continue that along the row. So we've crocheted into this chain. We're going to move down the row. So we're going to push our hook through the next chain. Yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two, into the next chain, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two, into the next chain, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two, into the next chain, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two, into the next chain, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two. You can see all of our double crochet stitches are cropping up here nicely. And into the next chain, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two, then into the next chain, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two, and then we're on to the last chain. So we push it through, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two. And just as we did at the end of our foundation chain, we made our turning chain. We need to make another turning chain for the next row and every row that we would be doing beyond this, we always do our turning chain. So we'll just chain one, turn our work and as I said before, we don't crochet into our turning chain. This is our turning chain here, the last one that we've just done. So if you look at our work from above, you can see that the next stitch is this one here. So we go from back to front, through both sides of the little V. We yarn over, pull through. We've got two loops on our hook. And just as before, yarn over, pull through two. And we looked down at our work again. We can see this is the next stitch. So we go through both sides of the stitch. Yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two. And we just continue to do that to the end of the row. So this is our next stitch. We push our hook through, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two. If it's helpful for you as well, initially we started with 10 stitches. So you can, as you're stitching back, count to 10 and that way you'll make sure that you've incorporated all of them. But like we were saying as well in the tutorial, it can be tricky at the beginning when you're just learning and just figuring it out to find the last stitch of a row. It's not too bad with the double crochet stitch, but the treble crochet can be a little bit trickier. So just take your time. It's all perseverance and practice. Don't worry if you don't get it perfectly the first few times. So again, with our double crochet stitch, we just go into our next stitch. Yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two, then into the next. Yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two, into the next one. Yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two, and the next. Just repeating over and over. We've got three stitches left. And this is a slightly trickier one, the last stitch. So yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two. And that's our second row. So again, to continue on, I'll just start off the next row just to show you again, just to keep it fresh in your memory. We always want to do our turning chain. So just chain one, turn our work. We don't crochet into our turning chain. We crochet into the next stitch, which is here. So we push our hook through, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two, again into the next stitch, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two, and one more to our next stitch. Yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two. Okay, so for as many rows as you want, if you were doing a 10 by 10 square just for practice, that's handy, just to do 10 rows of 10 stitches. And then if you've got a kind of a stash of different colored yarns, you can make loads of different squares. And then you can just whip stitch them all together or sew them together as you wish and turn them into a blanket or a bag or whatever you could use little squares for. So I'm actually just going to show you how to tie off. When you're finished, we'll just pretend this is the end of the row. All you need to do is trim your yarn, catch the end and just pull it through. And your work is nice and secure and it's not going to go anywhere. Hello again. So okay, so we're going to work on our granny square now. So we're going to use our treble crochet stitch for this one. And we're going to work in the round as opposed to working in rows. So to kick off again, we're going to need to make our slipknot. So with the tail of our yarn, we're going to wrap that around our index finger just once, just to make a loop. And then we're going to pass the tail of the yarn to the back of the loop. And then we're just going to pull that gently through to make a slipknot. And we're going to pop that on our hook and just pull both ends so that it's nice and snug but not too tight. Okay, so to begin working in the round, we need to chain four. So we're going to yarn over, pull through four times. And then we're going to slip stitch into the very first stitch. So if you can remember, the slip stitch was simply just push your hook through your first stitch like this. You're just going to yarn over and you're going to pull it through the first stitch and pull it on through the second stitch. Okay? So we've chained four and we've slip stitched into the first chain that we made. And you can see that it makes a little ring, a little ring that we're going to work all of our stitches into. So we need to crochet 12 treble crochet stitches into the circle, but first we need to begin with one. So to do that, we're going to chain three. 1, 2, 3. And this chain of three is actually going to count as your first treble crochet stitch as well. So to do a treble crochet stitch, what you need to do is yarn over and into the center of the circle, we push our crochet hook. Yarn over, we're going to pull it through. Then we've got three loops on our hook. We're going to yarn over, we're going to pull it through two of those loops. And then we're going to yarn over and pull it through the remaining two. Okay, so again, we're going to yarn over, push our crochet hook through the center of the circle, we're going to yarn over, pull it through. We've got three loops on our hook. Yarn over, pull through two loops and yarn over and pull through two. Okay, so if you look here, what we have is we've got our center and we've got, what we've just done is basically one side of the first mini square in the center of our granny square. Okay? So in a square, you've obviously got your sides and you've got your corners. So what we need to do now is make our first corner. So to do that, we're just going to chain two stitches. 1, 2. So we're going to start into our next treble crochet cluster into the center of our circle, just as we've done here. So to do that, we're going to yarn over, push our crochet hook through the center of the circle again, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two, yarn over, pull through two. Okay, and again, yarn over through the center, yarn over, pull through. We've got three loops on our hook. Yarn over, pull through two of the loops, yarn over, pull through the remaining two. And once more, yarn over into the center of the circle, yarn over, pull through, three loops, yarn over, pull through two, yarn over, pull through two. Okay, so you can see now, this is two sides and one corner of our first, our middle square that we're... We're working in the round here. So we're just going to continually work around and then we're going to build out and we're going to work around. And it's going to be exactly the same method that we're working with our first square all the way around. It's just we incorporate more stitches to make the square bigger. Okay, so we've done three more clusters of treble crochet, so we need to come to another corner. So to make the corner, we need to chain two. 1, 2. And then we're going to start our next treble crochet cluster of three into the center. So yarn over, push our crochet hook through the center, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two, yarn over, pull through two. Again, yarn over through the center, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two loops and yarn over the remaining two. Again, yarn over through the center, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two loops and yarn over, pull through the remaining two. Okay, so now we've got three sides done. We need to make another corner. So we're going to chain two more stitches and into our final side. So yarn over through the center, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two, yarn over, pull through two, yarn over through the center, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two, yarn over, pull through two. And one more in this cluster. So yarn over through the center, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two and yarn over, pull through two. Okay, so we're almost there. So you can see here, we've got our rough square. So we've got three corners and four sides. So we're missing a corner. So we need to chain two. 1, 2. And then to join to the beginning, what we need to do is count to the top of our first chain where we started originally. So 1, 2, 3. And what we're going to do is slip stitch into this chain here. So we're just going to push our hook through that chain, that third chain that we initially did. Just push it through, yarn over, pull through and pull through. Okay? So that is the center of our granny square. So now we need to build on this. So what we need to do for that is to chain three. 1, 2, 3. Then we're going to double crochet into this big gap, sorry, treble crochet into this big gap here twice more. Like I said before, this chain three counts as our first treble crochet stitch. So we need to do two more to make a cluster into this space here. So yarn over through the space, yarn over, pull through. We've got three loops on our hook. Yarn over, pull through two and yarn over, pull through the remaining two. So we need to do one more. Yarn over into the space here again. Yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two and yarn over, pull through two. Okay, so now we need to make our way over to this next space. So to do that, we're just going to chain one. Okay, chain one and then we're going to start our treble crochet cluster into the corner here. So yarn over through this gap here. Yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two, yarn over, pull through two. And again, yarn over into the center, yarn over, pull through. We've got three loops on our hook. Yarn over, pull through two and yarn over, pull through two. And we need to do one more for a cluster. So yarn over through this gap here. Yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two and yarn over, pull through two. Okay, so now I'm going to explain to you where we are because it can be kind of confusing when you're looking at this from the beginning. So if we look on this square here, we've done this whole center part. We've just crocheted that as the beginning cluster. We've just crocheted this one. So now what we need to do is make another corner and crochet back into the same space that we've just worked into to make the corner on this round. So to do that, what you need to do is chain two, like we do in all corners. And then we're going to do another cluster into the exact same space. Okay? So yarn over through the same space we've just worked into. Yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two, yarn over, pull through two. And again, yarn over into the same space again. Yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two and yarn over, pull through two. And once more into the same space. Yarn over into the same space, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two and yarn over, pull through two. So now you can kind of see, this is the outer corner of this square. So we're going to work down this side of the square. So we need to get over to our next corner. So to do that, we're going to chain one. And then we're going to do our first treble crochet cluster into this corner. So yarn over into this corner, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two and yarn over, pull through two. And two more treble crochet stitches into this gap. Yarn over through the same gap, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two and yarn over, pull through two. So we need to do one more. Yarn over into the gap, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two, yarn over, pull through two. Okay, so we need to do another corner, just like we did on this side. So we're going to chain two. 1, 2. And again, we're going to work another treble crochet cluster into the same corner. So we're going to do our next treble crochet stitch into the same gap. So yarn over, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two and yarn over, pull through two. Okay. And two more to make that second cluster. So yarn over into the same gap, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two and yarn over, pull through two. And again, yarn over into this gap, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two and yarn over, pull through two. Okay, so you can see now the square is starting to take shape here for our second round. So we need to make our way over to this next corner. So to do that again, we're going to just chain one to make a little bit of space to get over there. So we'll do our first treble crochet cluster into this space again in this corner. So yarn over, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two and yarn over, pull through two. So yarn over into the same space, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two and yarn over, pull through two. So yarn over through the same space again, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two and yarn over, pull through two. Okay, so this is the first of the cluster in this corner. So to do our actual corner, we need to chain two. So 1, 2. So we're going to work into the same space again for the second cluster. So yarn over into the same space, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two and yarn over, pull through two. And again, yarn over through the same space, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two and yarn over, pull through two. And then again into the same space, we're going to yarn over, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two and yarn over, pull through two. Okay, so we're on to our final side. So to make our way to this last corner again, we're going to chain one. And we're going to work into the same space that we started. So we're going to yarn over, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two and yarn over, pull through two. Yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two and yarn over, pull through two. And then one final time, we're going to yarn over to the same space. Yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two and yarn over, pull through two, one last time. So you can see, we're almost finished. We just need to do this corner here to tie these sides together. So to do the corner, we chain two as always. And then we're going to slip stitch into 1, 2, 3, the third chain where we started off. So we're just going to slip our hook into the third chain and we're going to slip stitch through one and just continue to pull that through. Okay, so that's our second round done. And then we're going to work on our third round. The best thing about this pattern is it just repeats and repeats and repeats ongoing for as long or for as big as you would like the square to be. So we're going to work now in the round on our third round of the granny square. So to start off just as before, we're going to chain three stitches. 1, 2, 3. And as before, this is going to count as our first treble crochet stitch in this round. So we need to make two more for our first cluster. So to do that, we're going to yarn over into the same gap that we've just built this chain off. We're going to yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two loops, yarn over, pull through two. And we need to make one more. So yarn over into the same gap, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two and yarn over, pull through two. Okay, so that's our first cluster here. So we need to make our way over along the side to this gap here. So to do that, as before, we're just going to chain one stitch. We only chain two in the corners and we chain one to make our way between gaps. So we're going to do our next cluster. So yarn over into this gap, yarn over again, pull through. We've got three loops. Yarn over, pull through the first of the two loops and yarn over, pull through the remaining two. So we go again, yarn over through the same gap, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two loops and yarn over, pull through the remaining two. And then once more into this gap, yarn over into the same gap, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two loops and yarn over, pull through two. Okay, so to make our way over to this side, over to this gap, we need to chain one because we're not in a corner yet. This is our corner. So we're going to do our first cluster in this corner. So yarn over into this gap, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two loops and yarn over, pull through the remaining two. So two more like that. Yarn over into the same gap, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two, yarn over, pull through two. Yarn over into the same gap, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two and yarn over, pull through two. So this is our first cluster in this corner. So to actually turn the corner as before, we need to chain two stitches. So 1, 2. And then work our next cluster into the same space again. So yarn over into the same gap, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two, yarn over, pull through two. So yarn over into the same gap, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two, yarn over, pull through two. So we've got two on this cluster. So we need one more. Yarn over through the same gap, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two, yarn over, pull through two. Okay, so we've got our cluster of three done again. So we need to make our way into this gap. So we need to chain one. If you're finding that I'm going really fast, I suppose this is the best thing about this video, just feel free to flick back and figure it out if anything is going wrong for you. Hopefully you'll be able to see. So I've just chained one so that we can start working our treble crochet cluster into this square, into this space. So we're going to do just that. So yarn over into this gap, yarn over again and pull through, yarn over, pull through two, yarn over, pull through two. Yarn over into the same gap, yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two, yarn over, pull through two. And once more for this cluster. Yarn over into the same gap, yarn over, pull through. Yarn over, pull through. Yarn over, pull through two. And yarn over, pull through two. Okay, so again, we need to make our way to the corner. So to do that, we need to just chain one. So we can do our first cluster over here. So yarn over into this gap. Yarn over, pull through. Yarn over, pull through two, yarn over, pull through two. And two more like that, yarn over into the same gap, yarn over, pull through. Yarn over, pull through two, yarn over, pull through two. Then yarn over into the same gap, yarn over, pull through two, yarn over, pull through two. Okay, and again, we're in a corner here. So we need to chain two stitches. One, two. And we need to work our second cluster in this corner. So yarn over into the same gap. Yarn over, pull through. Yarn over, pull through two, yarn over, pull through two. Yarn over to the same gap, yarn over, pull through. Yarn over, pull through two, yarn over, pull through two. So we've got two treble crochet stitches on this side of clusters. We need to do one more. Yarn over into the same gap. Yarn over, pull through. Yarn over, pull through two and yarn over, pull through two. Okay, so that's our two clusters done in this corner. So we need to make our way into this gap. So to do that, we chain one stitch. And we work our next cluster in to this gap here. So yarn over. Into this gap. Yarn over and pull through. Yarn over, pull through two, yarn over, pull through two. And again, twice more, yarn over. Yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two. And yarn over, pull through two. And once more here. Yarn over through the gap, yarn over, pull through. Yarn over, pull through two and yarn over, pull through two. Okay, so we're working our way. Over to this corner. So we need to chain one. To get into the corner. Okay, so we're going to yarn over and start our first cluster in this corner. So yarn over. Pull through, yarn over, pull through two and yarn over, pull through two. So we've only got one, so we need to do two more for a cluster. So yarn over through the same gap. Yarn over, pull through two. Yarn over, pull through two. Yarn over once more into the same gap, yarn over, pull through. Yarn over, pull through two and yarn over, pull through two. Okay. So now we need to turn our corner. So to do that, we chain one, two. And we need to do our second cluster into this corner. So we're going to yarn over into the same gap. Yarn over, pull through. Yarn over, pull through two loops, yarn over, pull through the remaining two. Yarn over into the same gap. Yarn over, pull through. Yarn over, pull through two loops. And yarn over, pull through the remaining two. So we've just got two, so we need to do one more to make a cluster of three. Yarn over into the same gap. Yarn over, pull through, yarn over, pull through two and yarn over, pull through two. Okay, so we're almost there. So what we need to do next. Is chain one so that we can work into our next gap. So chain one stitch. And work our next treble crochet cluster into this gap. Yarn over into this gap, yarn over, pull through. Yarn over, pull through two. Yarn over, pull through two. Yarn over into the same gap, yarn over, pull through. Yarn over, pull through two. Yarn over, pull through two. Yarn over into the same gap, yarn over, pull through. Yarn over, pull through two and yarn over, pull through two. So that's our cluster done in this gap. So now we're making our way back over here. So we need to chain one. And you can see this is the starting corner that we began in. We've already got one cluster in there. So we need to do one more cluster because we've got two clusters in all of our corners. So we're going to yarn over and into the same gap. We're going to yarn over, pull through. Yarn over, pull through two, yarn over, pull through two. Yarn over into the same gap, yarn over, pull through. Yarn over, pull through two, yarn over, pull through two. Got two here, so we need one more to make a cluster of three on this side. Yarn over into the same gap, yarn over, pull through. Yarn over, pull through two, yarn over, pull through the remaining two. So. We're almost there. All we need to do. Is make this final corner here and just join. These sides of our square. And then we've got our square done. Which will be identical to the other one that I've just made. So if you make them again in lots of different bright colors. It makes a beautiful blanket. So you could just, once you get used to the pattern and the way to make granny squares, you can just sit down, watch the telly. And when you're drinking a cup of tea and you'll just knock out tons of these and they just make a really lovely blanket. So. Um keep practicing, that's the key. And just keep rewinding the video if anything is confusing. So again, just to finish off, we need to make our last corner. So to do that, like before, we chain two stitches. And we're going to find our chain three from our original chain, from our original chain on this round. So one, two, three. And we're going to slip stitch into the top of this chain three. To bring the two sides together. So we're just going to yarn over, pull through and pull through again. And to tie off. All we need to do is snip. Our working yarn. Like that. I like to wrap it around my hook. I usually leave my hook in place and just wrap it around and pull it through my loop. Like that. And then it's nice and secure. It's going nowhere. All of these tails, obviously, you'll need to weave in at the end, which is everybody's least favorite part of any. Crochet or knitting project, I know, but sadly, it's part of them all. Um so hopefully, that's clear. Uh and you can follow my instructions. As I say. Feel free to rewind and play things over and over if they don't make sense. And just keep practicing, keep trying, be easy on yourself. Um learning is a process. It takes a little while, but you'll get there. Trust me, you can all do it. Good luck.